Here.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. Notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made in this agenda less than twenty-four hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda.
No changes.
Citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law no matter might be considered under this item unless council determines that this matter requires emergency action. Do we have any emergency action? Closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four fourteen ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requests that an item be considered separately. Any questions? Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the contention.
Okay, do I have a second?
One second.
Any other comments or questions on the consent calendar? Okay.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes. Claim removed from consent calendar. Council to consider and take action on the claim to Intralinks in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents.
I need to declare a conflict on that one.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve Scott's conflict?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Do I have a second?
Check it.
Any comments or questions on that?
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes. Council to consider and take action on the claim to Intralinks in the amount of forty-three thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and fourteen cents. Have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a, have a, well, we have a discussion after. Okay, a second.
Second, any discussion?
I, I just want to make sure it's more than normal and I, I just, I, I've asked around a little bit, but I want to make sure anybody that isn't part of that conversation knows that a big portion of this was for replacement of a bunch of hardwares, I understand.
Computers.
Seven laptops and sixteen towers.
Okay.
We upgrade a computer every five years because that's the end of the warranty period. And we think that they're nearing their end of life.
Yeah.
So this, this particular claim had the replacement of a lot of computers.
And I, I don't have any problem with it, the stuff. I just want to make sure that anybody that wasn't part of that conversation understands that it, there was.
Those, those computers, the hardware was thirty-five thousand.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Okay, any other comments on that? Okay, roll call.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Financial report. Council received the April twenty twenty-five financial report.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Wayne Kizier, Finance Director. I do want to point out too, on that last plan for Scott's too, there were a couple of computers that didn't get replaced last year too, so it was a little bigger this year than normally. Usually we don't do sixteen quite a bit, but I just want to point that out too. Very, very much appreciate that because I don't have a worker here anymore else. So I'm going to go, if you want to go to page three, I'll just kind of start on the budget actual comparisons. There's not a lot of changes through the monthly capture balance and stuff. So that one, the top part there is the expenses as always, and then the revenue at the bottom there. Fifty-eight percent through the year, kind of like to see the expenditures at or around or below that. Fifty-eight percent, and if you look at that, every department is, is at or below fifty-eight percent. In fact, I don't think anybody's really over fifty percent looking at it. And then on the revenue side, the general fund is right at fifty-eight percent. Streets, again, property tax, a big chunk of that, we'll see that this month. And then we'll see the last part of it in September. Cemetery perpetual care fund, the same way, we'll see it this month and then the next month. So what's not on this report, we'll see it in the month of May. But other than that, everything else is, is looks in really good shape. And then on the next page.
Lane?
Yeah.
On page three, so like waist wire's a little bit higher. Is some of that because we bought the vehicles for them?
Well, th- those are revenues, so they just.
Oh, okay, that's revenue, okay.
They just have a little bit more in revenues than what we projected.
Okay.
This year too, so. This is the revenue versus expenditure. So this is what they've actually spent versus what they've actually received in revenue. Anything that's in the parentheses would be your, your negative numbers. So the cemetery perpetual care fund, again, we only budget like seventy, eighty thousand dollars in revenue in that fund, and then we spend three hundred and fifty thousand goes to cemetery. So that's going to be negative. Special projects, we've talked about that a lot, we've already received the ARCA money, we've seen it, received the insurance money in there, and so that's why the expenditures are over the revenues in that fund. And then in debt service, that was from moving the debt service payments from street over to debt service. And so that's why their expenditures have exceeded revenue, so. So we're not moving any revenue, we're going to take that, we're just spitting that fund down. Other than that, if you guys have any questions for me, that's really all I have to talk about.
Questions for Wayne? No?
You guys have anything else to also mention right now? We are making, I would say, pretty good headway on the budget for this year too, so Kevin and I will start some of the specials with that probably this week. We have to, but just so we're, we're making pretty good headway, we'll probably schedule this at July. Is that when we did the?
Budget workshop?
Budget workshop this year, so.
Yeah.
We'll shoot for July again this year for that budget workshop, but we're making pretty good headway with that everything is in the computer from department side, everything back from department head, so.
How sales tax revenue?
The recent report tomorrow is still down a little bit. I think it'll be, I hope to see it turn up next month, you know, those are two months behind. Go ahead. Hop in, Lane. So we're not too far from what was projected in the budget, but you'll see that in the, in the reports.
Okay.
It is trending down, and it's trending down for everybody. If you look across.
All the other cities.
Yeah.
When we look at communities across Nebraska, More flat has been down this year, Hastings has been down this year, I, they've been sit, sitting down this year. I mean, everything has just kind of trended down. I mean, I'm, I don't, I'm not an economist, I don't know if it's, you know, we had such record high inflation in previous years. I mean, that's common sense wants to tell me that, but it's not bad.
Yeah, you know, compared to last year, it's, it's down. But if you look at the previous years, we're right in there. Last year was just, it was a big year for sales tax, terrible.
And last year we were over eight million dollars.
Yeah.
In sales tax that we received through the fiscal year. I don't know that we'll get there this year, but well, we will be close, we'll be right there, we're at seven point eight, seven point nine, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lane.
Can I get a motion to approve the financial report?
Make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other comments or questions on the financial report?
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, we have a public hearing, so I'm going to ask anyone who intends to speak at the public hearing to stand and raise your right hand. Just Sharia, okay? Do you swear and affirm that the statements you make tonight to the city council are true and accurate? Say, "I do."
I do.
Okay. So, council to conduct a public hearing set for this date at six P M. to receive a report from the L B eight forty Citizen Review Committee. So I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Sheri Sersada, Economic Development Director. The Citizen Review Committee met on May eighth. It was a great meeting. We had a new committee member join the board, Spencer Ryan from U S D A. We think he's going to be a great addition to the board. We had Jordan Dietrich give a report on the rural workforce housing that we contributed to. That was good. And then I gave a report on the L B eight forty loan portfolio, which you guys have in your packets. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys had about the way that portfolio works. I know there was some questions about maybe the anticipated payoff for each loan. A lot of them are very different. We have loans ranging from twenty twenty-five all the way up to twenty thirty-four. So it really just depends. Some of them may even end earlier than anticipated just because of the job credits, you just don't really know.
So I have a question. Is it, would it be cumbersome to, on the report to have like a column that has the terms of the loan or, and kind of their, how long out they are and all that?
We actually got that added this morning, unfortunately. It just wasn't in your packets, so I apologize for that, but Kevin, myself and Lane have the updated spreadsheet with those anticipated payoff years at the end of that spreadsheet for you guys to share.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you want to have any questions or comments? Anything you want to add, Kevin?
Ah, the portfolio's in pretty good shape.
It's in good shape, we have, we have about three point seven million in the account right now that we're looking to spend. At that meeting, we also talked about some anticipated changes that the committee and myself and the department are kind of working towards adding towards the L B eight forty program. One of those being childcare, so I had a meeting with Nebraska Public Power District last week, and they're doing a childcare study for us to kind of get the ball rolling on looking at possibly adding childcare to our L B eight forty program as an eligible business.
Have we, have we had any success with, we've put initiative out to fund downtown?
For retail.
Yeah, for retail.
Not, we haven't gotten any applications at this time, and we're kind of looking at wanting to restructure that a bit as well, just because it's, it's only within the Business Improvement District, so that is just downtown, and it's only limited to ten thousand dollars. So right now, kind of what I'm seeing through sitting down with folks is it's kind of just not really working out, yeah.
I was wondering if the ten thousand was too little, I mean, to actually get something started?
Yeah.
That's kind of what we're thinking, so we're kind of just looking at anticipated changes that could help with that, to help with our small businesses.
Makes sense.
We're, we're looking at some other plans across the state to see if, you know, there's some ideas and some other plans that we should consider for ours.
I, I really like the looking at the childcare thing, that's a huge issue in the community, so.
That's one of the biggest, housing and childcare are two of the biggest issues that we have. Those parents that can't go to work aren't contributing to the workforce.
Yeah.
Kind of just a round and round cycle, so that was, talked about at the meeting and starting work on getting that to include habit in pass, so.
Is housing something we currently can't fund?
Yes, through the rural workforce housing fund.
And, and there's some other ways to do that as well, through infrastructure and stuff like that, so we're, we're exploring all of that.
So it's kind of a segue into another comment, I guess, i- if I understood right, this, this plan is up for retooling in, at the end of the fiscal year?
October one, we, we should have a new plan ready to go.
Okay.
It becomes effective. That's what the election did last.
Yeah, okay, so, so that's the ba, that's the avenue to make changes. You can do it anytime, I suppose, but a, a, a commonsensical time to do it, maybe. So with all of these here, are there some on this list that maybe didn't go as anticipated? And is there any less, hopefully there's, if there is lessons learned that we might be able to apply as we develop the new plan?
Yeah, there were a co, there's one in particular that didn't go as planned, but all of our other ones really have been very favorable loans.
Yeah, and I think when you see the spreadsheet, you'll be surprised, it's the successful.
As a whole.
And, and as a whole, it doesn't seem like there are that many, but there's a bunch, there's quite a list of.
Beyond list.
Yes.
Yeah.
These are just our active.
Yeah.
Like current.
These are just the active.
Any other questions or?
Are there ones on your tray that the committee is concerned about, I guess?
Um, no, none that they were concerned about. I did report that Pioneer and Reverence, we stopped the payments on them because they would, we would end up having to owe them with the job credits that they're returning.
Yeah.
So really nothing of concern, everybody's in compliance at this time, so.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else have anything to add? Questions? And we don't have any exhibits on this, okay?
My door is always open to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well then we will close the public hearing. Uh, petitions, communications, and public input. Council to discuss and consider action on ten special designated liquor licenses for B R Entertainment LLC, D B A Heights Tavern to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at the bands on Broadway Summer Series, six five, six twelve, six nineteen, six twenty-six, seven three, seven ten, seven seventeen, seven twenty-four, seven thirty-one, and eight seven, from night, four thirty to nine thirty P M. at the Eighteenth Street Plaza.
Um, yeah, so basically you want to do what we did last year, uh, the mixed cocktails, and then, uh, I think the bands on Broadway committee reached out to us about serving like pop moons, ciders, and stuff like that, just to try to get more of the community involved in it. But yeah, just we should do this as usual.
And you guys did this last year?
Yeah, we did it last year. We didn't have any problems, we, I think it went pretty good.
And you guys do wristbands?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's part of the whole event, I mean, could the cooperative event with?
Yeah, everyone's required to do a wristband.
And you, you check everybody's I D.?
Yeah.
How many years have you guys participated with this?
Um, I think last year was the first year.
Okay.
I remember seeing the little horse trailer, that's, that's yours, right?
Geez, hasn't been doing long, but I, I think last year was our.
I did the legwork, he, and it didn't, it was a sign though.
I sense danger.
You say no, just ask you.
I, I have to say this only just because it's, um, it doesn't really mean anything, but don't count on getting your horse trailer location approved or chosen on your diagram smack dab in the middle of the closet. I'm just kidding, I'm just kind of giving a little bit to you, so.
Anything you want to add, Kevin, any?
No, um, Anton Rodway's been going very well, had his two events this summer, so.
Yeah, he's been there, he's great.
You, you guys been doing well and?
Yeah, it helps us out sometimes. The bars is lower in the summer, so it's really, I think for us, so.
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Bidla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council to discuss and consider action on a community festival permit for B D S three C LLC, D B A Flyover Brewing Company for the Flyover to Flyover, a gravel party event on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, from five to eleven, to include a noise permit, parade permit, and street closure of Nineteenth Street to Alley until eight A M. on June twenty-eighth.
Good evening, Council, I'm A P., I am the offsite manager at Flyover Brew Company. This is Dan, he's our head brewer. We are hosting, uh, you guys all know what Ruby de Rondé Brew was. We kind of absorbed that from Aaron Rains this summer, um, who canceled the event, so we've decided we're going to absorb it from him. We did host this event last year, um, we're going to try to make it bigger this year. We are planning to have a registration at the brewery this year on Friday, June twenty-seventh, and in conjunction with that, we would like to have a street dance outside on Nineteenth Street between Broadway and the Alley, which we also do, I think we did that, we already did that one, didn't we? For our birthday party? So we want to do the same thing for the registration event, kind of make it a good party, and then keep that street closure until eight A M. the next morning, so the bikers can take off from that contained area. We'll take down the gates once they leave, put those gates against a fence, we'll get our crew to bring it back wherever they belong, and then the riders will take off down Broadway. I gave you the route, um, so we will talk to all the police that you guys need to know about the route. Aaron, I believe, has talked to Gearing Police Department because they will be riding through Gearing. We've already talked to Banner County, Zane in Banner County, we've talked to the sheriff, we've given them the route where we're going to go. We have two stops in Banner County, we've got N S D Ls there because we have refreshment stops. Um, and then we're going to end up in Potter, so we're going from Flyover to Flyover. And yeah, it's just a gravel party, so hopefully showcase Western Nebraska. Yeah, it's a, yeah. So hopefully we're getting Western Nebraska tourism involved, Scottsburg County tourism, Brandon's involved with us, Strick County's involved a little bit, so just a good showcase for Western Nebraska, so. Would like to get the street closure and then the parade permit, festival permit, it's a little bit of.
So this, this will replace when they were, they usually have in September?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, moving it up a little bit.
They had, they had the gravel nationals in September, this is actually the date that they usually have the review.
Like the local or?
We used to take off from Five Rocks.
Okay.
And so they took off from Five Rocks and ended at Five Rocks, but we're going to take off.
And we crossed the highway, and we had some police escort, but we're not expecting a lot of people. We have a hundred on here, but I really don't see that happening, so I don't feel like there's a need for escort or, and it, it's not a race, um, it is just a fun ride.
Right, yeah.
So there's not going to be people trying to like race cars or make it across any intersections, anything like that. They do know that they have to follow the rules of the road, the second one, like, where you have to stop, they have to yield right away, anything like that, rules of the road you'll apply.
And we understand that the bridge is expected to be opened by then. That's our understanding. When, uh, the single file, one lane, they're going to ride, you know, across the bridge, down Tenth Street or Broadway, whatever, Tenth Street, whenever it's going to be renamed now, um, through Gearing, and then they'll go back towards Five Rocks, up towards County Route fourteen?
No, we're not going to do that.
No?
We're staying on Tenth Street as much as we can because it's two lanes going one direction, so we can kind of stay it right, so people will be able to pass cars if they need to, so the bikes will just kind of, they can just stay out of the way of that one.
But then they go back up on Graal though, when we get to Gearing, they go back up on Graal.
Kimball Avenue.
Right. And then they'll go kind of weave back through the, some Groves, I think they call it.
Yeah.
And then back into the hills.
End up in Potter.
Yes. Sixty five, if you want to join us.
Little trick.
Now I'll be in a car, not on a bicycle.
So you answered my question, I didn't know if it was a rules of the road thing, since it's going through quite a few intersections.
And it is also, we're taking off at six thirty in the morning, so I don't feel like there's going to be a lot of traffic at that.
And my guess is they'll probably be, I mean, it's not going to be like, everybody's leaving right at the same time as a race, so it'll probably be like, hey, no ten here, ten there, five, ten minutes apart. We'll be fine.
The big couple.
We'll be a few that make a race.
There you go. Again, I'll be in my car, not on a bicycle.
Any other questions or comments for, I'm on this? Okay.
No, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes. Council to discuss and consider action on a special designated liquor license for B D S three C LLC, D B A Flyover Brewing Company to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits from three to eleven on June twenty-seventh for the Flyover to Flyover, a gravel party event.
This is the party the night before, so this is when all the bikers come in to get their registration packets, so instead of having them come into the brewery, we're going to push them out onto the street, into the gated area. Um, we're, we hired a band, so the band will play, I think we said six to nine P M. Out on the street, we'll put the trailer out on the street, um, kind of alleviate everybody from coming inside. We kind of have this down to a science, I think, now. We run the gates fully across Broadway, fully across the alley, no access in or out of those gates, everybody has to come through the brewery. Uh, we have somebody at the back door on Nineteenth Street IDing and wristbanding at that time. If they're under the age of twenty-one, they get a different color wristband that's like neon yellow. Everybody else has a white wristband, so easily identifiable, who could lose twenty-one who's not. And then the, um, trailers outside to alleviate the flow on the bar inside. And then we'll get port potties outside, ask for extra trash cans, and just kind of keep everything as much outside as we can. Launchers, ask people to bring their launchers, extra furniture outside, and then at the end of the night at eleven o'clock, we'll do the full cleanup, we'll leave the gates up again. First thing when the riders take off in the morning, we'll break those gates down pretty much against the building and bring it back to Murdock. So yeah, this is just to serve the beer outside.
Question?
Yeah, I have a question, the, is, uh, so the, the fenced off area, the party area, is, does that include the sidewalks on both the north and south side of Nineteenth as well?
Yes.
Is, is there, what, what do pedestrians that want to use the sidewalk, do they, is there, has that been problematic? Or?
No, we usually, so the streets, um, I usually contact the streets department, they drop off, um, like the big orange faircaves that say street closure. We've never really had anybody asked to access it, um, but they can use alleys, the both alleys on both sides to get around the buildings.
I'm just curious if there was.
Yeah, we've never really had a problem. The faircase at Brinas had big sandbags, um, I think maybe one year we had somebody ask, and we just asked them to reroute, and there was no problem with it.
Should we?
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, resolutions and ordinances. Council to consider action on the third reading of the ordinance removing certain term requirements of members serving on the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Commission.
An ordinance of the city of Scottsburg, Nebraska, amending the Scottsburg Municipal Code at section six dash two dash ninety-eight relating to the Economic Development Citizen Advisory Commission by removing certain term requirements, providing for an effective date, and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
And again, this is just so we're more in alignment with all the other groups.
Well, um, this particular ordinance actually has terms and term limits. And there's certain expertise that's required for this group, so it's just not very practical for us to have term limits, so, uh, state statute doesn't require it. The application review committee has no terms, so, uh, this ordinance would just take the terms and the term limits out of the ordinance in the mere state statute.
Okay.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Any other comments or questions on that? Okay.
Stricker?
Yes.
Bidla?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Okay, council to consider action on the first reading of the ordinance dealing with occupation taxes to include liquor license classes, is that I V L M Y, Y K Z, and Z K?
Yes.
Okay.
Sounds like an alphabet.
Do you want to read it and then we can talk about it? Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
An ordinance amending the Scottsburg Municipal Code at six dash six dash eighteen dealing with occupation An ordinance amending the Scottsbluff Municipal Code at six dash six dash eighteen dealing with occupation taxes and including class I B, class L, class M, class Y, class Y K, class Z and class Z K liquor licenses, providing for an effective date and providing for publication in pamphlet form.
This is really, uh, your honor, counsel, some housekeeping. This catches up with state statutes. Um, there's, uh, certain liquor licenses, um, that we haven't had in our ordinance as far as the fees go for the occupational tax. So this, uh, includes those and that's what you read off mayor was, the ones that we're adding. And we do have some of those licenses that exist, uh, and I think it was probably the class M license that inspired this look. So we're, we're just adding, uh, the ones that you read to our ordinance.
How did you derive the figures in the, the tax, the, or the fees?
Can, Kim, can you help a little bit?
We're allowed to double.
Right, the liquor commission.
Just short and easy.
Right, gives us an amount and then they say that we can double that amount. So that's why, um, it's more, and then we charge a school tax on top of that. So like, uh, the six hundred and then you would add three hundred onto that, their total would be nine hundred dollars for the liquor licenses. And three hundred of that, three hundred of that would go to the school, six hundred of that would come back to the city for occupation taxes.
I'm, I'm good with it, I just wanted to make sure there was some methodology besides a drawn out of a straw.
We always like to follow statute.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Um, bids and awards. Counsel to discuss and consider action on awarding the bid for Veterans Park Mini Pitch Concrete Improvements to Mark Chrisman Trucking in the amount of a hundred and nine thousand, six hundred dollars.
Now, your honor and counsel, uh, you know, when we, when Parks came up with this project, we had hoped that this was work that we were going to be able to do ourselves. And, uh, transportation did do the demolition, but when they did the demolition, the ground was just saturated underneath. And that's, uh, when we realized that we needed this project to be engineered and we needed a contractor, uh, to do the work. So that's, that's what we're doing. So we put this out to bid. Chrisman was the low bid, um, come in under, um, engineer's estimates. But this is, uh, concrete work for the mini pitch in Veterans Park and this is also ARCA funds.
And this is the same group that did the concrete work for the Eighteenth Street Plaza.
Eighteenth Street Plaza, the pickleball court, they did, uh, a lot of that work there and now this, so they do good work.
So the, um, sat, the ground saturated with moisture, is, is there, uh, where, where, any idea where that's from? Is it going to be problematic in the future, you think?
We don't think so. Uh, we think the ground is just wet. You know, there was a ditch that runs back behind that, but that ditch hasn't had water in it for quite some time. So we think Parks was doing a really good job watering that part and, and the water table's probably not that far.
Uh-huh, yeah.
It just stayed wet underneath that concrete. So, so they'll have a, uh, structure underneath, a rock.
For drainage.
Yeah. Make sure it's going to last us a long time. So, um, project that we're pretty excited about too. It sounds like you have to go to Omaha to see another mini pitch. Just not one, so we're excited to get this done.
Any other questions on that? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Kim? McCarrigan?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Bid lap?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
Okay, reports from staff boards and commissions. Counsel to discuss and consider action on approving a change order for the Slide Gate project at the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Good evening, council, mayor. Oh, this change order is for twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Um, there was some unforeseen work, extra man hours, delays, and they also had to rent a couple extra plugs to stop the flow of wastewater. So they ended up doing a good job, got it done, still under budget total.
So is it complete now? Everything's done? Okay.
Complete and working good.
For the next lots of years?
Lots of years.
We hope.
Lots of years.
Okay. Right, I, I read the, the thing from, uh, the engineers for N C U Shaft. Although it's not always the desirable thing, it all made complete sense of the extra cost.
Yeah.
I'm just glad that they did it and didn't wait to try and get approval in the meantime. Now, that sounds weird to say, but sometimes you just have to solve problems.
Yep. Yep, it's, it's worth mentioning that we have two hundred and fourteen thousand dollars budgeted for this project. And with this change order, it's going to bring the total to one hundred and sixty-five thousand, so we're waiting. Good, while we have budgeted. I'll make a motion to approve the change order if that's in order.
Yes. Do I have a second?
I would second that.
Any other questions or comments on that? Okay.
Bid lap?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Stricker?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Okay, council reports, information only. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting. Anyone have anything to share?
I have a very important announcement.
Okay.
This is Mark Bull's last council meeting. Um, he's been really annoying. Started on Saturday. Um, so we, we do have a retirement party for him on Friday from two to four in the council chambers.
Here, okay.
Yeah. So yeah, if you want to take any shots at Mark, you know?
It's your chance.
That's going to be a lot of opportunity.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Mark.
Absolutely, that's been a pleasure.
What's the to?
You know, since I got there. No, it's been a pleasure. It's been thirty-two good years, it's a good city, uh, good projects. I hope the quality of life is a little better with no train horns and some of the things that got in competition, but, uh, you have a great staff. Work with them all, worked with a lot of council members, a lot of different city managers, but you're good hands, real good hands. Good hands with our legal, if you've managed our. Good hands with Kim, good hands, you're in good hands with everybody. Um, it's a little better shape, but we're ready to go to the next phase and in life and the next journey.
Yeah.
That brings us your good hands with Doug. Um, he'll take over, take care of things. I'm just going to walk away, maybe he won't ever hear me again, I don't know.
Doug's got you on speed dial, right?
No, I changed my dial. Yes, you know, I'm always done, always done, if there's something that comes up, but, um, I'll keep my licenses on the line here and then let Doug get through his dial. And then I'll retire and we'll call it done. But it's, it's been a good, good career and I appreciate it, I'm confident you had it, mate. But if I could approach, I'd like to shake your hand.
Thanks.
Thanks very much.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you've done.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mark.
You bet, thank you. Thank you, sir. And you. You too.
So we do, appears you do have some acclimation time to the winter time. I'm based in Idaho firsthand experience, uh, beware of the next winter.
Yeah, I'm just trying to keep my schedule clear.
Thanks. Thank you, Mark. We're happy for you.
Yeah.
Thank you. More, more on Friday.
Um, other updates? You have something?
I went to the zoo celebration last weekend for the seventy-fifth and it was packed. Park lot was full and then the area down by the pond, um, that was full, overflow parking. So they ended up with almost two thousand people for the day and Splash Pad was running. They had music and then in the evening there was a band there. Uh, they had a magician for the kids, so the little kids seemed to like it. And, uh, then throughout the day they had animal training, so they did a lot of stuff with working with the bear and the tigers and stuff and then people could get in close and actually see all that. There were five food trucks and, um, I talked to one of the vendors, uh, a lot of them were out of product by eight o'clock. It was that busy. So they were open till nine, but, um, that just shows you how busy it was and a lot of positive feedback I heard from a lot of the crowd there, so. Um, other stuff, they, they went through forty-eight school groups, April and May, which is a ton of kids. The new website is up and running, so if you go on the internet now, you can pull it up, it looks a lot nicer. It's more interactive, so you can book stuff through there. And then the last one is Little Miss, the mountain lion's getting bigger and they're going to make some more announcements. Uh, they're getting ready to kind of introduce some more out to the public in the main, uh, exhibit space, so that will be coming real soon.
Okay, cool.
That council member Solomon did have some pictures that they wanted to share and we didn't get them, but we won for next week.
Yeah, we'll try next time.
Yeah, and I'll meet with Kai tomorrow.
Okay.
Um, I was asked to speak at, um, Integrated Life Choices, was the group. They, um, uh, do work with disabled individuals in the community and they just wanted to come talk a little bit about what we do at the city and so I went and spoke to them, that was really nice, so. Anything else? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Third.
Phillips?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Oh, yes, yes.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Yes.
Yes, I thought we were done.